All the mayors please say aye.
Aye.
I would know. Mr. Husky, you can call it here. That's in 2012 dash four.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight we have a special request, 2012 dash four, request for such exception permit under Article four, section ninety-four point one dash seventy-six. For the town's voting on it to utilize the property located at five twenty East Atlantic Street as a tattoo salon. The property for which the special exception is to apply is located between Lafragon Street and Winston Street on the south side of the street. It has a perimeter fifty-five feet and depth of one hundred and forty feet. Property is zone commercial C two. This property is presently owned by Timothy A. Fadul Jr. and the request is being made by Kevin J. Lockhart. Planning commission heard this request, they recommended approval. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone who's come all in and speak in favor of this request.
Hey, my name is Kevin Lockhart. I'm the one that requested the zoning issue. I've been a tattoo artist for seventeen years, twelve years in Richmond, five years in Farmville. I've been living for the last four years close to the South Hill area. Would like to work closer to home. I've been knowing Timothy Fadul for a long time and we just kind of got our heads together and sort of came up with the idea that it would be economically savvy for us to kind of do both of our businesses in the same place and it would help both of us out. I've achieved a lot of things over the years as far as tattoo artists, I'm a little bit cut above the normal. I was part in two thousand and three of all of the state regulations and the board hearings with the Washington DC, the Richmond, Alexandria, Fairfax, all over the state and tried to help the state itself regulate tattooing in a whole. I've won numerous awards. I'm just trying to change the face of tattoos, not necessarily the same run-of-the-mill, cut-pipe of tattoos, so on, and I'm trying to do, just trying to work by appointments. No flashy signs, no banners, no run-of-the-mill thing, just trying to word of mouth, hard work, dedication. I would like to bring more revenue to the town of South Hill. From outside, I have clientele as far as Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, and all the way into Maryland. We would be traveling two towns to render services, which means, you know, food, lodging, everything else that they'd have to say. Anything else?
I would, now maybe I should have known this, but Tim, this is in the barber shop.
Yeah, well, Earl, what we were thinking about doing, what we would like to do is the building that I'm in right now, I'm only actually utilizing about thirty percent of it. I have a separate section, it's going to be completely divided by a wall, separate entrance, separate everything. And I know he had mentioned something, I just wanted to emphasize too about what he was saying about the signs because I've been in this town with my business for twelve and a half years and the last thing I want is a tacky-looking operation and in my opinion, that's what I see when I see some of these other tattoo shops in town. And that's not what I wanted. And that was one of my concerns when I first talked to Kevin about it, but what he's going to be, what he would like to do is just strictly appointment only, he's been doing it now for, you know, going on twenty years, he's got established clientele and, you know, this way, like I said, it wouldn't really affect with my business because we have a separate entrance for him, separate entrance for my customers, and it would just make sense to do it that way. But, and like I said, I've been knowing him for years, he's a great guy, he's got a couple of children he's raising up and he's a good person, I can doubt for his character too. But, and you know, he's, like you said, he's living here, he's having to commute to Farmville every day, so we thought it would, it would make sense to bring him on in to my place and I got the perfect spot for him in there, like I said, that's not being used. He's got a separate, he's got his own bathroom, you know, handicapped accessible bathroom and, you know, separate water and everything, so like I said, it would actually be no sign whatsoever on East Atlantic Street, you know, because I also have the lot behind the place which is there, I think that's Main Street, isn't it?
Yeah.
So that's the actual street that, you know, the entrance would be off of and that's where the parking lot's at. And, you know, he wouldn't have nothing more than a small sign in his door to let people know which door to come into.
Kevin, if I may ask, will you be closing or keep them, will you be keeping the Farmville location open if you're down here? So this will be, if this happens, this will be the only location you have?
Okay.
I have a question. You're the tattoo artist, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to know if you change ink for each customer?
Yes, ma'am.
So do you want to use that one for that one for that one, all change?
Separate needles and everything, oh yeah.
Okay, we understand it's a separate needle, but do you go to a different ink wheel for each, for each customer?
Oh yes. Yeah, there's absolutely no, we go through, show you, we have part of the state regulations and things that actually I did before. We go through very high strict standard, bloodborne pathogens, aseptic technique classes, as well as we go to first aid CPR. We're very educated on the proper way of doing things.
You mentioned clientele from the Myrtle Beach area, down off Stegworth Street?
What's that?
Stegworth, off of Stegworth Avenue down in Myrtle Beach, is that clientele that you're speaking of?
Stegworth.
Yeah, in Myrtle Beach, down in Myrtle Beach. Do you have clientele down there, will they be coming up here?
Well, yes.
You made the statement that you like cut above the rest of the norm, what does that mean? Explain that.
I never, I never tried to change myself to fit the bill of what I do. I'm a country boy, I always have been and I always will be. I never saw any need in, you know, big earrings and leather jackets and spikes and crazy hairdos and I've always kind of stood my ground as far as my moral standards on what I do and don't do. I'm kind of a modest person. There are tons of things on the internet that you see that are questionable moral character. If it makes me feel uncomfortable, I do not do it. As well as I've stood my ground over the years for no, absolutely no gang, group affiliations or no, I don't tattoo them, I don't have anything to do with any of them. I guess it's, I mean, it's pretty much about it. As I said, a moral standard for myself and I've stood hard by it over the years to where I've seen tons of people around me that just broke and went on about.
What hours of operation do you anticipate if this is approved?
I would like to try and stick to the hours, Tim's pretty much there. Which is nine AM to six PM during the week and then on Saturday, I'm open from nine AM till two PM and I'm closed on Sunday and Monday. I work after it's not getting paid. There again, it would be, it would be by appointment basis, it wouldn't be a...
No body piercing at all?
No, sir.
I have a question we'll ask you. You give us a tip, like you have to redo this every year.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was pretty long looking at you, you just had to have done, never gone to the level?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yes, we do, I actually didn't have to renew it until December, I don't remember exactly what the day was, but I didn't have to do it until December, but I've been off this past week and I met the guy the other day in Petersburg and went through the plastic.
How many we got here, Tim? Got two, we turned down one, I remember. One for Brady. We turned one down. The only problem I have is like that, I was really not a fan as a person, but it's any shopping firm and I felt like if that kind of ruled any shopping firm, if I voted, I tackled one, I had a lot of questions about that. My, my problem is we just keep having them pop up, I don't know how many more we can have, but this is free, free pretty quickly. And that's the big thing I have is just how many more we gonna have come in here? And that's the main interest coming into South Hill. And that's, that's my biggest problem I have with it.
That was the, that was the issue that me and Tim were talking about, is coming in off of Atlantic Street, you would never even know that it was even there. My clientele that I do have that follows me on a regular basis wherever I go is going to know where I'm at due to be telling them. It's not going to be a publicized thing, there's nothing going to be out on Atlantic Street to let everybody know that there's a tattoo shop back there, it's going to be more of a word of mouth, appointment basis only type thing. So I mean, if you didn't know it was there, you would ride right by it and you'd never even know it was there.
Yeah, the only thing that you're going to see on Atlantic Street is the same thing that you're seeing right now, which is a small barber shop sign that I have. I don't want to change that and I talked to Kevin about that from the start and we agree to that. So it's not going to be anything on Atlantic.
Yeah, the big ones picking up like two or three doors front of them.
I know, that's what I brought it up earlier because I told you, in my opinion, that's tacky and, you know, I mean, I don't have anything to do with the town signing, you know, so I have nothing to do with that, but I, I, that wouldn't be in my business or I wouldn't do that.
What you, what you, what two o'clock in, I mean, you open at two?
On Saturday.
Yeah, on Saturday.
During the week, I'm there from nine to six, nine AM till six PM, Tuesday through Friday.
I put a lot, we have you open at two o'clock in the morning, haven't you? You said two o'clock or you don't move, sir.
The answer to the tattoo file would be off of my main, we'd see the sign.
It'll be on the backside of that.
The only thing that we would try to, to have is that I wouldn't want, you know, people to come in to Tim's side of the business, so just in the backside where the parking lot is, we would have a sign that would let you know if I'm into the back door instead of...
A small sign, yeah, that's all, there's going to be, there's going to be nothing on Atlantic Street.
Tim, you're going to have a rear entrance from the back, you'll be...
Already, yeah, already, I already had the rear entrance.
So you would go to his office on, from Main Street on the highway?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And yet anyway, people wouldn't even have to come into my barber shop to go to, to his tattoo shop, it's going to be totally separate entrance because I have enough traffic in my barber shop with customers, you know, and anybody that's been to my shop knows that I usually stay pretty busy and I told Kevin, I said, geez, I don't need more people coming through here, you know, looking for you. So this way, like I said, there'll be nothing on Atlantic Street. My customers can use Atlantic Street for the barber shop.
I just have one more question. And I'm actually reading from something that you know, in Richmond, several weeks ago, a little month ago, I've been looking at that, you know, it's made here. How about the tattoo ink, you know, here it talks about some of these very toxic, has there been a improvement with the type of ink that they change over the years or not?
I'm not...
Is there actually any ones, I don't know.
Yeah, it's actually a very good question. The, the reputable companies that produce ink are FDA approved, they ship worldwide and in order to be FDA approved, there has to be no toxic elements in, in the ink itself. When I purchased, I have actually two companies that I order my ink from, they're all organic pigments, they're all, they're glittering and distilled water-based pigments and I ask them for a content sheet on everything that's in the ink or I don't even consider, you know, some people just think that it's a big secret of what's in it. And if it's a secret, then I don't even want it. I would like to know, I mean, therefore, you create a barrier between you and all of the outside companies that just produce what they feel is good quality ink. But if it's FDA approved and it's shipped worldwide, it's what you have to do in order to get it through customs out of the country or into the country. I do purchase some stuff from Japan, but there again, it has to be FDA approved to be brought into the country, which means it's thoroughly gone through. But, yeah, I, I would, I do not want to create any type of an allergy with anyone I ever met, I mean, that's just, that's a terrible business.
Tim, tell me one more time why you were located in South Hill, you had, you said from Farmville?
Yeah, I was in Farm...
You have two colleges, I'm not saying they don't want tattoos, but you have two big colleges up there. Your business would have been really booming, I couldn't say why it's come to little South Hill, you know?
I live right here near Willows Mill and I drive from Willows Mill to Farmville every single day and just the way that the economy is and the gas prices and I spend what people make a week in gas going back and forth to work, I'm just, just kind of tired of the travel, just really want to slow down and be able to go to the home.
Anyone else? Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this request?
Hey, how y'all doing?
And, Mr. Mayor.
I'm Dustin Bass, most of y'all know him because of Round Bass. I was going to, I come late and speak with him, I have Kevin, I've known him and Tim all very well over the years, Tim's been cutting my hair since I was probably nineteen years old, whenever he first comes down and, you know, growing up and stuff, you know, I just took a liking to Kevin and so I, you know, Tim referred me to Kevin, you know, it's funny, all the places I could have gone, you know, I just took a liking to Kevin because of his character, you know, how he is, how he treats people, you know, he's not like most tattoo artists, you know, you can actually go to his shop and go inside and, you know, feel very at home, you know, he doesn't very elaborate, you know, out of home, how to describe it, very calm, so to speak. But, you know, I've been going to him for many years, but that dude probably went three or four years. And I brought him probably personally twenty clients more from Lunenburg, South Hill, White Plains, around this area, and they choose not to go to Body Accents, Scott, who was the first tattoo artist to come to South Hill, was actually another good friend of mine, and he was at Body Accents and he's a partner in there now, you know, he, he's, you know, I guess we're friends, acquaintances, and to mention, I'm not, you know, very familiar with them, but judging by like the signs, the type of work, you know, Kevin, I can bow to him, he's definitely, you know, calm, collected, he's not very flashy like that, you know. So I just wanted to come and share that with y'all, that way y'all, you know, I know tattoos are very, you know, folks, those red flag up, you know, folks don't get weary and stuff, but I just wanted y'all to know he, he definitely is a good guy, he's definitely somebody I think y'all in South Hill should have and look forward to deal with and have business with. Very, very good friend.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who's...
I'd like to know, is that the tattoo that Tim has on his neck that he's doing?
Yeah, he had done that one on my neck, just there.
Okay.
Are you in?
Sir?
Are you in?
I'm a barber.
It's a good thing, it's a good thing he had a good for me too. Yeah, that's a unique, that's a unique tattoo.
Thank you, Charles. Anyone, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. And, uh, thank y'all, Kevin and Tim. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I make a question that we raised, we raised the request for special exception permit under Article four, section ninety-four point one dash seventy-six of the town, of partners, so in order to utilize the property located at five twenty East Atlantic Street for the tattooing.
Second?
We have a motion in second. All the mayors please say aye. Aye, no.
No.
At one note. I, I will say that I've known Tim a, a, a long, a good number of years and I know he's always, and he is, you know, the man of his work, so I, I know that so good. And Kevin, you, you present yourself very well. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, appreciate that.
Charles?
Yes, sir. For the month of October two thousand and twelve, the Department of Labor officials office issued thirty-six permits, conducted seventy inspections, the thirty-six permits were thirteen thousand, twenty-seven dollars and eighty cents in permit fees, those permits also equals seventy, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty cents in worth value. There were no exemptions for the month and there were thirty-four convicted jobs.
Charles, just roughly, what would you, what would you say how we compare the last year? How much would you estimate? I'm not, how would you do it?
Thirty percent?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm almost at thirty.
Motion to close, may I? This board is in more than that.
Last year, we did at this time sixty-eight hundred dollars in permit fees, this year, year to date, we're up to forty-eight thousand, eight hundred.
We have a motion in second, all the mayors in favor please say aye. Aye, no. Chief Hudson is out this evening, tonight, on vacation and you have a report, very briefly, complaints, five hundred and fifty-four this year and year ago to date, five hundred and fifty-four.
You said first and second?
I, I went up. That's very good. Miscellaneous calls were down from last year, recovery of money, twenty-one thousand, eight seventy-one versus eighteen forty-two. Administrative news, you have, I will point out that Officer Allen Hall was recognized by the South Side Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program for his efforts in DUI enforcement conviction in two thousand and twelve, let's go to Calvin.
Mr. Mayor, I move through, appreciate your support.
Aye. All the mayors please say aye. Aye, no. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and town council financial report as of October thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. General fund, eight million, four hundred and fifty, a thousand, nine hundred and two. Water and sewer fund, a hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight. Cemetery fund, sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fourteen. Meadow street, negative ten thousand, six thirty-seven. Total in the checking account, eight million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Total investments, two million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-four. Total past due tax passes all year, ninety-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-six.
I move on, through all the financials. Second?
All the mayors please say aye.
Thank you.
I noticed on the past year, you all should collect and figure on the dues on the past year.
Oh, yes, sir, because the home taxes have gone out and the tax is down, so I'm including those bills.
I can't remember what, what it was last time on your head, on the last report.
It was over a hundred thousand last time.
It started on a hundred and a half.
Yes, sir.
I would like to welcome the Bart Ute Political Science Class, God's nice having y'all here. You all want to take me on the football team, volleyball team, or soccer ball, whatever. Football team, where are we going?
We're going to Lafayette High School this Friday, playing in our regional playoff game. Our volleyball team made it to regional playoffs, but we lost, we lost out, but it is good, we had a good thing.
Congratulations, darling.
Thank you.
Woody, you have some on...
I have a committee report, at least I don't really call it a committee report, but this weekend, March the beginning of the thirty-first, annual holiday bizarre to be held here in South Hill, sponsored by the Friends of the RTI Library. I believe we've got the largest number of vendors we've ever had, we have a hundred and thirty-three plus. We are really looking forward for a good show. The show's going to be from nine to five on Saturday and from ten to four on Sunday. We cut it back just an hour on Sunday and of course, it's that old little Lee Whitehouse on Rain Street and we're going to have the shuttle buses again, we're going to have brunch and stew, hamburgers, hot dogs on those weekends and we'd just like to invite everybody to come and enjoy it. And do one thing for us, if you don't do anything, spend, not necessarily wisely, but just...
Thank you, Woodrow. Kim?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have a couple of additional items to put on your agenda, but I'll do those at the end. The first thing is the South Hill Revitalization Committee and the Economic Restructuring Subcommittee of that committee invite council to attend two community vision assessment meetings at the RTI Library on January sixteenth and January twenty-third and both of them will run from ten AM until four PM. And the Economic Restructuring Subcommittee is hosting the meetings, they will be facilitated by Standard Tanner, Tanner of the Virginia Tourism Corporation and the meetings will attempt to focus on ways to promote and enhance business development throughout South Hill, but primarily in the downtown area of Full, West Dumble and McInnesburg and Atlantic Street. And citizens, visitors, business leaders and property owners are encouraged to attend and reservations are recommended as space is limited and there is a flyer in your packet and you can contact Tommy Zinco to reserve your space.
Tim, a question, will it be a repeat on the twenty-third or will we have entirely different sessions? Is that the question?
It will be a continuation of the first.
Continuation?
It is a two session, a two different sessions.
And Kim, if I can add to that, today I went to a, a regional meeting which encompasses representatives from Brunswick, Charlotte, Lunenburg, Emporia, Greensville County, Notaway, Blackstone in particular, and McInnesburg on a regional economic development that's being developed now for these local counties and they're going to have meetings every month. And it's, it's something that, you know, currently with this in hand and that in hand, that people are moving together to develop these plans regionally, not only just South Hill, which they say they're awful and things.
You're referring to the Trans-Tech region.
Yep.
And that, that is something that is being funded through the HCV.
That's correct.
And it is there to encourage regionalism. I think Councilman Jordan has had some exposure to it, we've been to a couple of meetings, I've been to a...
Very worthwhile, very informative.
It's, it will be interesting to see how that proceeds. I'm not sure the Alliance will continue to be called that because they need some identity with this region and I think it's named Trans-Tech because with the interstates eighty-five and ninety-five and Highway fifty-eight, they see it as a transportation and a technology core, or especially with Microsoft, but, but there are a number of meetings that are scheduled.
Very worthwhile, I encourage anybody locally that would be interested to attend and it's not only government officials, it's private businesses, hospitals, represented quite a few...
They need to commit to attending all of them, is what they request, because it is by reservation only and they ask that if the people do attend all of them, and as you said, that's usually on the first Tuesday.
First Tuesday, next one's going to be in Keys, but we'll do some of the... That's correct.
Well, Tim, same with sixteenth, it's my birthday, so that's a very special day. Y'all are going to have something for me, I'm sorry, my time's...
Happy birthday, Tim, we'll sing happy birthday to you.
We have a free tattoo store.
We're at...
The second item, quite some time ago, we began working with Mr. Reed Pambid of the Virginia, Virginia Commonwealth University School of Government and Public Affairs and he was working on his master's degree and because we've had a lot of comments about our Atlantic Street corridor, Mr. Pambid's master's thesis focused on studying that corridor and recommending a number of different things. And in your packet is that study and it was presented to the street committee a couple of months ago and, and they studied it and we met a few days ago. And the studies, it contains a lot of creative ideas. Some of them are practical, some of them are not, and some of them warrant further consideration and we feel that the ones that do warrant further consideration are some study of our zoning ordinance and our comprehensive plan and perhaps some beautification opportunities. Other things that they've recommended such as four or five roundabouts around town are really not practical for us from a financial standpoint or from an operational traffic flow standpoint. So after studying this, what the street committee recommends is that we present this study to the planning commission for them to analyze with the direct, the direction that they look at it from a zoning... that they look at it from a zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, and beautification perspective. Of course, they'll look at everything in the study, but at this time, we're not prepared to hear any recommendations about building a number of roundabouts around town. So that is the, the recommendation of the street committee, and I've discussed it with Charles, and we'll be happy to present this to the planning commission with that, uh, regulation, whether we did a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, uh, uh.
Second?
All of the voters please say aye.
Aye.
And, and we're asking for their initial recommendations from it, uh, by, uh, the lady. Okay. In this fiscal year, we also faced for the first time, um, a line of duty act expense. And the line of duty act was put in place a number of years ago to provide certain benefits, medical and death benefits, to hazardous duty responders, often call first responders and their families. And those benefits were funded by state government until two thousand twelve, when the General Assembly adopted legislation to pass that cost on to local government. I've had a conversation in exchange of few emails with Art Lipscomb. He's the legislative director for the Virginia Professional Firefighters Association. And he tells me that of the forty-one states that have line of duty benefits, Virginia is the only one that requires local governments to pay for this code. I have not researched to verify that. He's the legislative director, and I took him at his word on that. But he and the Firefighters Association are working to try and get the General Assembly to enact new legislation that will provide a dedicated funding stream to pay for the line of duty benefits at the state level, and to relieve local governments of, of that responsibility. Their current proposal is to impose a surcharge of eighteen cents on phone bills. You'll see it on the end user of each access line, uh, for which the seventy-five cent E ninety-one, the fee is charged. So it's eighteen cents a month on your phone bill. However, they are open to any suggestions that, um, people can come up with that seems to be a workable mechanism for funding the load coverage. What the Firefighters Association has asked is that local governments adopt a resolution to, um, support their efforts. And I put a copy of the draft that's basing it out, which was really, really long, and I thought, and then also of the proposed bill. That is something that's gonna change many, many times over the course of the next few months. I'm recommending, um, I, I drafted a shorter resolution that I felt was more important to a point and more practical for us, which recommended that we support their effort to, uh, enact state funded legislation, that we support the load and the RODD, the funded at the state level. And that resolution is in your packet. And, uh, what I'm asking for is, if you so choose to adopt this resolution tonight, and we can forward it to the Firefighters Association, or if you'd like more time to think about it, we can do that as well. But I do think we ought to support their effort.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution as presented by the Town Manager and Agenda item C.
Just a second. Question. Kim, um, in lieu of workers' comp, are, are our firefighters covered by workers' comp?
They have a separate policy. Our volunteers, we, we have two employees that work for the fire department, they are covered under the town workers' comp policy.
Okay.
We have a separate, um, workers' comp policy that covers the volunteers. And it's hard to get. Bob Jones and, uh, Watkins Insurance Agency provide that coverage, and they do many, many volunteer fire departments, uh, throughout the state and possibly even more Carolines. BML doesn't even offer that coverage, but we do maintain that coverage for our volunteers.
Good, good.
To the tune of seventeen thousand dollars a year, something like that, is what the premium is.
Uh, nineteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand.
I just hope we don't get in a situation like the Sheriff's Department with Officer Mall, where, you know, an active guy, when a tree falls on a police officer, a fireman, or rescue squad, person is actually working on emergency. Is there any overlap with this and?
And LODA? Yeah. Not to my knowledge, no. It's completely separate.
We'll have to read this all.
Because LODA is for first responders, it doesn't include just firefighters, it can include law enforcement and rescue workers as well.
We, we just make this resolution about the state level funding, not the town, or this.
State level. We, we are endorsing the decision to support that, to get state level funding.
Any other discussion? We have a motion for a second. Have you mind calling the roll for voting?
Rex?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Luster?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Backer?
Yes.
And Pedro?
Yes.
My couple of, um, other items to mention, just upcoming events, um, November twenty-eighth is Tele Santa at the Chane D Place, starts at four o'clock, runs to seven. And we normally have seven hundred plus, uh, people go through there. On December first is the Christmas Farmers Market at the Market Square from ten AM until two PM. December second is our Christmas parade, um, uh, RT Arnold is the grand marshal this year, and we'll be gearing up for that most of the day. Let's hope it's a little warmer day than it has been the last couple of years. And on December fifth is the, uh, Christmas dinner for area town councils, and that's, uh, at Rosemont at six PM. Uh, and I have one item in exec, executive session, one more item for open session. Um, we did receive the final copy of the FY eleven-twelve, uh, financial audit from Craig Jones and Alva. I believe that was sent out to you, and there's a one correcting page that Heidi will distribute. And, um, Heidi and her staff have done a remarkable job over the last year. There's no recommendations for any type of improvement in that audit, um, so wanted to mention that too.
Yeah.
And it's a good job, Heidi, and, and everybody on that. And I want to recognize every employee in the town because, um, we do have something in our budget that provides warrants, and if we come in under budget, and we were over three hundred thousand dollars under budget on expenses for FY eleven-twelve, so employees will receive an incentive of three hundred and fifty dollars less taxes in their payroll check. And I said December nineteenth, but I meant November nineteenth, it will be in there, so that we'll have any time for Thanksgiving. But that is a collective effort from everybody to save over three hundred thousand dollars. And I have one item for executive session.
Mr. Collins, I just wanted to say, I thought that, uh, that three hundred thousand dollar savings was excellent work. I know all, all of the staff and everybody had to be involved, and I commend you.
Thank you. They're not here, they're in Georgia, are they? Karen had, um, a death in her family, so she could not be here tonight. Um, that's the personnel report for October, uh, as for training, um, Edmonds and Associates who does our financial software, uh, they did a virtual community conference, uh, October first through the fourth. They used to have a user group meeting in New Jersey, but, um, they're now doing the user group online so that they can get more people involved. And as you see there, over twelve hundred people, um, participated, but Leslie Kubis, that Linda Crowe, Stacy Archer, Heidi, and Karen all participated in the Wind Hill this year. Heidi, who is on the advisory board for Edmonds, um, also participated in another meeting where they talked about product development, customer service, and again, that was a conference call. Charles Hudson attended a Virginia Building Code Officials Association Annual School in Constance, Fredericksburg, October fourteenth to sixteenth. And Alan Elliott, uh, attended, uh, Department of Conservation and Recreation Training, uh, talking about erosion and sediment control programs, um, and again, that was a two-day thing. Uh, other items, Sarah Thompson, who, uh, was an accounting technician too, resigned on October twenty-sixth, and we, we conducted interviews, and Beth Thompson was selected, and she started on Octo- or November first. And we have one opening in the Public Works Department for a mechanic, one position, and the closing date for that position is November the sixth.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to update you tonight on some projects in the Public Works Department, uh, and some completions. Our asphalt contract thirteen oh one has been completed. That was done on Plank Road from Dambler Street to, to Oaky Road. There was a section, that, that area was milled all the way through, uh, on the average of two inches, but there was a section near Dambler Street where we had to mill up to five inches. We would have some drainage problems, and that just shows that there was a lot of overlaying going on over there of the Yaw Drive, was also overlaid, and that was, uh, was one and a half inches of asphalt. With the Tobacco Heritage Trail signage has been erected. There were twenty-two signs put up at eleven, uh, points along the, uh, trail from Rocket Branch Road down Gooseberry Road, Side Hill Avenue, Dambler Street, over to Plank Road, Oaky Road, and down Highway forty-seven. And you see, there is a photograph that shows that Tobacco Heritage Trail that goes off Plank Road where we have just asphalted. And, uh, I mentioned that the, the striping was due, that was done on Friday as planned, and that is now striped as well. The, uh, the progress of the renovation, the old concession and stand and bathroom facility on the Upper Field at Centennial Park, that includes, we have blocked in the old door and survey window of the concession stand. We constructed the roof over the existing twenty-by-twenty buildings that extends five feet over each side and thirty feet over the east end. The metal roof has not yet been attached, uh, and the width of the playground area will also be moved, actually the same width as that building. There's also a couple photos there, obviously, the, uh, the headers and the, the trusses going up, and then the roof completed without the, the metal yet. You know, that's gonna be a green metal roof. Uh, the, uh, over at Parker Park, uh, we put in a lot of trees around over to the softball complex, uh, the twenty-five Cleveland pears were put along that, uh, inside of that curb, uh, it looks really nice, and we've got the other, some other little oaks that were around the area. And if y'all haven't seen that yet, uh, they did a great job. Are any of those trees for, some of them for Centennial Park? Yeah, the, the Centennial Park, we are in the process now of putting those trees up. Uh, tomorrow, uh, we will continue on with putting those trees up as well.
Thank you, Bill.
Mm-hmm.
Bill, I'm lucky, uh, I'm lucky you did the, uh, the concession stand, just needed for the people up in the middle of the night.
You designed it? You designed it?
Do we have any old business? Any new business? Then I entertain a motion to go in executive session on two point two, three, seven, eleven, eight, seven.
Second?
All of the voters please say aye.
Aye.
All of us, no. Thank y'all.